And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, emergency exits over here, and then when you came in and there is a generator in case our was go out. Of course, it won't go out with you guys here. Um, we are running this in accordance with the meeting, we're running meeting according to the rules of procedures adopted by this board in January 20th of 2021. We're also following the town board resolution number 326 in 2020. Regarding remote attendance, because we have two of our members, Tim DeLucia and Adrian Bellis are on the call or on the Zoom with us tonight. So that being said. Tim, you want to give your address?
Please.
Please.
Absolutely, 1824 East Vanbeck Avenue, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, or St. Francis, Wisconsin, 53235.
How about Tim DeLucia?
1452 Mertensia Road, Farmington, New York, 14425.
Adrian Bellis, your address, please.
Uh, 104 Gannett Road, Farmington, New York.
Thank you very much. And because our town or planning board members, we needed their address, so we appreciate that. Uh, next item up is approval of the minutes of the meeting, uh, last meeting. Does anyone have any comment? Oh, our clerk is also on the Zoom, so I would ask everyone to use their mics tonight if they would, because it'll make it easier for John to take a minute. As if I really need a microphone, but what the heck? I'll do it anyway. Um, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Doug, seconded by Aaron. Any other comments? All the favor sign if I'm saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's fine, aye. Okay, John, you got that? He's muted, okay.
Yes, I have it, thank you.
Okay, if you did anything good, yell out, John. If you can't hear somebody, yell out, we'll get them to talk up, okay?
Yep, will do, thanks a lot.
You got it, okay. So first item up on the agenda is site plan PB 0101-22, final site plan approval because of Nancy Folanga, final site plan on their single family residence. Who do I have to present that?
Um, this is Mike Green, I'm here, if you can hear me.
Mike, hear you well, thank you. Just give us a quick update on what's changed from preliminary filing.
Um, I don't believe there was uh, any, any, any particular changes. We did address all the comments at the last scenario. There was some issue with the wording about where the silt fence needed to be placed. I believe we've got that all straightened out, so I think we're good to go.
Good, that's why I like to hear, okay, Ron.
Yeah, that's that. Preliminary uh, site plan approval had the requirement in there of the silt fence around the entire property.
Hey.
And I'm talking with Lance Prebet. He said it needed to be down slope from the disturbed areas. And so therefore, that condition in the draft resolution that you have needs to be amended accordingly. So that it doesn't require the uh, property owner to have to put silt fence around that entire perimeter of the site.
Okay.
For however big it is.
Anything else, Ron?
No, the resolution, I did talk with Mike Sponable at Green Land Surveying, and he was going to try to get ahold of the code officer, but unfortunately, the code officer got COVID, it wasn't available.
So the resolution we have now has been corrected?
No, it needs to be corrected to reflect the wording change that it's not required around the entire prop perimeter of the property, only the down slope areas being disturbed.
Okay. Okay, Augie?
That work, code officer, this one.
Okay, Highway?
I'm not finished.
Highway?
Hello.
Fire? Okay, um, or we'll start with Adrian?
Um, I don't have anything, did MRB have anything?
MRB said they had no comment with regards to this, right?
None, none other than what I reported just yesterday.
Other than the change to only silt fencing down slope disturbed area.
Yep, I'm good with everything on this project.
Tim, DeLucia?
Good with this.
Okay, Aaron? Doug?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm good too. So John, we need to make the change into that wording uh, to improve. I assume you got it run already that the um, the silt fencing is only on the downward slope area that's being disturbed, did you get that? John, you're muted, buddy.
Well, there we go, yes, I have the change, thank you.
Okay, just want to make sure you had the change.
Yeah, thank you.
With that change and the rest of the resolution, you're okay with that?
Yes, I'll set for me.
Okay, how about Mike Green? Mike Green, okay?
I believe we're all set, we'll bring, we'll bring over the final prints.
Perfect, okay. Uh, so I have a motion to approve the resolution with the change.
I'm moved.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Doug. Doug, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Veets?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye.
Carrie?
You got it done, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. All right, talk to you next time.
Yep. Okay, next item up is PB 0102-22, final site plan approval for our group. This is in the uh, Farmington Commons Fund. Hey, how we doing?
Great, good evening, everyone. Matt Donaldson, Marathon Engineering, and Jerry Goldman and Jim Sotakos with me as well. I do have a thumb drive of all the materials that came to you folks. I don't know if you want to see it again. Uh, everything has been addressed, I saw some emails and.
Oh, wait, we need to see it again.
Okay, it's up to you guys.
Well, if somebody here, Doug, somebody really wants to see it, is anybody on the, I mean, Tim or Adrian, you guys want to see it?
As long as nothing's different from the packet, I'm good.
Okay, okay, it's the same as the pack.
So everything's the same, architecture is the same. You will note in the uh, material that was submitted, the name of the line for great union is on there. The signage has been tweaked, we'll be bringing in the signage package uh, in the near future for approval as well. Um, but we've uh, got confirmation from Highway and Town Engineer that the cores were satisfactory on the loop rope. Rachel's one of the last outstanding items. Uh, Jim's got a quote for the upgrade work at the rear of the plaza, so whatever dependent that'll be uh, moving forward here very quickly. And everything else with the exception of getting final sign off on SWIP, which we just have one comment that Lance has been otherwise high up over the last few days, I guess. Um, but I corresponded with him today, and he said that we're just about there. So I know there's a condition in draft resolution addressing that. So with that, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them, but if we've got all the eyes out of the house.
Okay, which for me, we'll turn it over to Ron.
Yeah, the only uh, condition, Lance Sanders, that he needs to be satisfied before he signs the final drawing, which is a standard will be put in there. It's, we, we didn't know whether we were going to get a written report with comments or what. And he just said basically that MRB is working through the drainage provisions with the design engineer. And I have no issues with the board taking action tonight uh, with the uh, condition that MRB comments to be addressed prior to signatures, and they will be.
Right, and he doesn't have a date for that letter yet, because that's been run, right?
No, he, he's unfortunately got two young.
Yes.
With COVID.
Yeah, so he's gotta be a blast.
He's got his hands full.
Okay, so then how do you want to, did the whole comments contained in the MRB group's upcoming letter?
No, just tell me.
Just say what? Put out the date on it?
We'll, we'll, we'll fix it, to say that the town engineers' which will not be fixed until all conditions are considered.
Okay, all right, we'll fix that. Okay, anything else? Augie?
Well, I think we have, you already touched on the site, the signing packet, did you ever bring that in? Um, the only other thing Dan wanted me to reiterate is that the entrance off 96 and all the other uh, conditions will be completed prior to the C of all for the banking issue.
Understood, we saw that in the condition that, uh, of the draft resolution. That's fine, yeah.
Dan? That's all I got. Highway?
As Matt stated, the core samples didn't uh, prove to be satisfactory for private roadways or highways all set.
Right, and if at some time, it doesn't meet town code, so if you ever did want it dedicated, it would need to be redone, which I doubt you would ever do that, but just making sure you understand that.
We don't see that.
I don't foresee it either, but uh, heaven forbid, we don't put it on the record and at some later date, somebody says something, so we're just trying to get it on the record. Any else? Hot fire? Okay, we'll start here in the room, Doug. Aaron?
I can add it.
Adrian?
I am all set with this right now.
Wow. Tim DeLucia?
I'm good with this.
And I'm good with that. Go figure, this, you guys have done a lot of good work, I appreciate everybody working together on this one. There's been a lot of back and forth and things going on. Think it'll be a great addition to the town. Um, and I think the resolution as presented with that minor tweak in the MRB group comments, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Moved by Doug, seconded by Aaron, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Veets?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye.
Carrie?
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Get that file stuff in, we're good signed. And then you've got to work out the um, the bonding or whatever, and then.
Yeah. But if there's any dedication of it, which submitted and that's enough for letter credit.
The letter credit, yeah, you get the letter credit going, and you can get into your uh, your preliminary or your uh, construction, yeah, there you go, construction.
Yeah, we'd like to do that, so Jim can do some of that, and we'll work out there.
Perfect.
And Matt, that's all that's.
Yep, all right, thank you guys very much, thank you again. Yeah, thank you for all the uh, working with us on everything. Uh, next item up is PB 0306-22, final site plan amendment, this is an amendment to the RGENE uh, project that we've already had up there, so let us know what's going on. Oh yeah, that's right.
Before we start, uh, in my point with RGENE, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mary Studdling with the Bell Associates, here representing Oyster Gas and Electric. Uh, as indicated, um, we're here for Station 127, the site plan amendment. Uh, 127 is at 961 Hope Road. Uh, we received final site plan approval for work within the um, upper substation yard this area, uh, back in April of 2020. As the project has been ongoing, uh, there's been identified a need for additional infrastructure uh, within the substation to tie in some additional equipment. Um, and it's always preferable to have um, redundancy in equipment, so so tying it together as we can is a, is a good thing. Um, so we're proposing to extend the lower substation yard, which is the, the smaller yard down here closer to the group, um, by about 18 feet to the north, so the entire width of the yard. Uh, that would in turn, uh, push the fence out, we'd have a new fence along that area, uh, and replace any of the trees that would be impacted. We do have existing coverage under the stormwater general permit, so uh, in order to accommodate the increase in previous area, we've also amended the SWIP uh, that was prepared for the project. Um, and that means we have designed a fire retention facility to address the water quality and water quantity needs, and to meet the DUC standards and also to comply with Farmington's MS4 program. Um, as I mentioned, we amended the SWIP, and then we'll have to administer a change that would be easy uh, to make those updates. So there's not really too much to it, and we agree with the draft uh, resolutions and the conditions in the, in the draft, um, that were provided earlier this week. We can make the additional annotations that were necessary, and um.
Perfect, sound good to me, Ron?
Yeah, they submitted a, a part one of the environmental assessment form. We reviewed it, determined it to be a type two action. Uh, and it didn't need any thresholds for a type one or an unless, it didn't, it meant the type two was like four or five different provisions that we identified for. And then a draft resolution with conditions of approval, which I heard Mary say she's happy with, so we're happy.
Happy is good.
It's a way to start the new year.
That's right. Let's hope all our meetings from now on go this easy. Augie?
We're all set.
Highway? Fire? Okay, um, so what we have before us is a, first off, Frank, John, we have a type two?
Secret type two resolution, yes.
Okay, I have a secret type two resolution, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Doug, seconded by?
Adrian.
Adrian, all right. Any other comments on this? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Veets?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye.
And Aaron is recused.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item up is the final site plan amendment. I noticed, John, that on the title on it, it says secret classification, so you can clean that up, but other than that, I was okay with the runs to it.
He's got it.
Yeah, I figured if you did, it was just Ron copying and pasting, I know what happened. I know what happened.
Windows 10 hates me. And I hated this as much.
Okay, so uh, we have the resolution, the applicant has agreed to it. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented? So moved by Doug, seconded by?
Adrian.
Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Tim DeLucia?
Aye.
Doug Veets?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Ed Hemminger?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay, we're good. Thank you guys for coming in and keeping the lights on. Okay. Next item up, Ron, is M3 Enterprises, tell us what we got going on there.
Well, uh, M3 Enterprises has come to the town board with a proposal to amend the overall uh, site plan for the project by creating two new phases, phase three A and phase three B. Phase three A is a proposal to construct a plaza type commercial building uh, with having, instead of the original 21,400 square feet, I believe it was.
Yes.
Uh, a, a building not to exceed 19,900 square feet. Um, we changed the resolution uh, to accommodate that simply because with the condition as it was originally drafted, if they went over or under, they had to come back to the town board and if nobody wants to do that, it's too time to turn it. So the way it's written, I, I believe is okay. So there are three, two things that are happening. Number one, the town board has asked you for a recommendation on whether to consider these three changes to the conditions of approval for the original incentive rezoning at the 2017 annual request. The conditions of approval include, one, allowing phase three A and three B. There's no change other than the size of the building. The layout of the plaza and the outbuildings remain the same. The second condition is to have the flexibility to allow the plaza tech building to uh, add not more than 19,900 square feet. So if it comes in at 18,900, we're fine. Just an example. We have no um, knowledge that it's going to change. However, as you get into final details and drawings, sometimes you find a tweak here and there, it doesn't affect the resolution. And the third condition is that we have asked the town board to take out the word retail from the plaza type building. Because retail is defined very limited in the town code and does not include medical facilities. So there's two parts to that. One is to identify it as a commercial business type plaza building. And the other one is to uh, amend the types you use is allowed to include medical. So those are the four conditions. Is there anybody on from, from BME? Brian, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I'm here, Ron, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Did I do, still have to stumbling through that?
Yeah, you took away half my presentation, Ron, thank you.
And they're still there, no one?
Yeah, okay, Ryan, go ahead, and still are sitting on the rest that you, Ron did say.
Sure, um, so once again, Ryan Destro, BME Associates. Um, I believe online tonight with me is um, Mike Zeron and um, potentially Chris Ciardi from M3 Enterprises, um, as well as John LaFroyce from LaFroyce Builders. So ultimately, we are seeking final site plan approval for phase three A. Um, as a recap, um, I'll just touch on a little bit, expand on what Ron had covered. Um, as a recap, the Auburn Junction project, um, it did receive, as you mentioned, received incentive zoning approval and overall preliminary approval in 2017. Since then, a portion of Carmen's Way serving the property has been constructed. Um, and also a portion of the site has been developed with self-storage facilities, um, also known as always locked self-storage. Um, you're all aware of the location, um, but it is located just to the south of Carmen's Way on the west side of 332 and north of an existing portion of the Auburn Trail. I believe, Sarah, do you have the um, the colored site rendering to put up on the screen?
Sarah doesn't, oh, yes. Okay, we got it.
There we go. There we go. Um, final phase three A would consist of the proposed 19,900 square foot building, one-story structure, as Ron mentioned. Um, it would cover both uh, medical uses and slash retail, commercial uses. The, a proposed tenant, uh, medical tenant is anticipated to encompass approximately um, 10,000 square feet of the southern portion of the building. Uh, some additional site plan amenities. Connectivity, and then also the associated landscaping and lighting improvements, as well as a new dumpster pad. We did appear um, at the December 3rd PRC meeting. At that meeting and per input received, um, we did sh- now show a sidewalk connection um, to the Auburn Trail, that was a recommendation, that's now shown on this, on the rendering that's on the screen now. As well as um, additional landscaping along the uh, southern edge of the property, along the Auburn Trail. We enhanced the landscaping buffer in that area as well for input. And we're also now showing um, a low level variable height topsoil berm along the Route 332 front edge, uh, based on input from that meeting as well. All of the mainline utilities, water, storm, sanitary, were previously installed with the um, previous phases one and two. Um, an onsite storm sewer system, uh, discharges to an existing stormwater management facility. Um, lateral locations, uh, or lateral connections, I should say, will be, will be proposed um, to neck, to connect to the existing um, onsite utilities. Um, then overall, stormwater management design was previously completed for the Auburn Junction property, um, overall. And no additional stormwater management facilities, you know, are required or proposed with this current phase three or the future phase three B. So for reference, when you're looking at the rendering on the screen, um, the orange building on the left is the proposed 19,000 square foot building for phase three A. And the darker gray areas would be the associated parking area that would be installed with phase three A. And then the um, areas that are lighter in color represent the future um, future satellite structures, um, that Ron had previously mentioned for phase three B. Um, as mentioned, the phase three A portion has preliminary site plan approval and incentive zoning approval for a 21,400 square foot building. So as, as such, an application has been, we've made an application to the town board uh, to amend the zoning res- incentive zoning resolution to allow for the proposed medical use in three A. Um, as the original incentive zoning resolution, it's silent on the medical use, as Ron mentioned. Um, the proposed medical use is definitely a benefit to the community. Um, and it represents a viable and stable tenant. And the use, I, I should say, is not out of context with the overall development or surrounding area. So with the exception of the change in the proposed use for this phase three A structure, because really it's just um, a couple thousand square feet less in the same general area, um, the associated phase three improvements are proposed to remain in substantial conformance with the approved incentive zoning resolution and the overall site plan approval. Um, we're aware that the town board reviewed this application at their December 14th meeting. Um, and at that meeting, they have requested a report and recommendation from the planning board prior to amending the current incentive zoning resolution in place. BME um, has also submitted a final site plan application for phase three A uh, to the planning board for consideration, following an amendment by the town board uh, to the current incentive zoning resolution. So with that being said, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
I think that's it, so Ron, let me get straight to my mind, so we do a letter back to the town board saying we agree with changes that are, that are proposed and that they can change incentive zoning. Then the applicant will do a final site plan amendment to then run back fires for approval, is that the way I'm handed?
Yeah, there's, there's two parts here. One is getting the town board to
Correct.
make the changes, which I drafted a resolution, which will be submitted tomorrow, um, to do that.
Right.
The second part of that is to come in and get final approval for phase three A. And the town board will require amending the overall preliminary site plan, which goes with every incentive zoning to show the phase three A and the phase three B, uh, as it's now being proposed, given.
So then they have to modify preliminary, go through that, and then go through the final?
No, they can do it simultaneously. The condition that the town board is going to put on it is before a C of all. The condition that the town board is going to put on it is before a CFO is issued for that building, that overall preliminary plan will be amended and submitted for approval here and then filed.
So the current. Okay. All right.
And I discussed that with Ryan and I think we're all on the same page there.
Okay.
Moving it along.
That's what I did. Moving along is good. Anything else, Ron? Augie?
We have nothing for this, this time.
Good on you, highway?
One thing I'd like to continue to reiterate on the, on, on the record for this project, I heard a berm along the 332, as this moves forward, uh, I'd like to see some sort of conditions as to timeframes when that berm will be brought stabilized for a lawn area and a maintenance schedule on that, as well as a specific timeframe as to how long we're going to leave them topsoil, the excess topsoil stockpiled on that site. As we all know, uh, previously, we went through a lot of, uh, conversations to get that topsoil moved and/or the property properly maintained by just like some sort of a condition.
Yeah, there'll be some dates in it this time, sure. If, I assume you don't have any problem with that, Ryan?
No, we're fine with that.
Okay. Anything else? Fire? Okay, um, Aaron.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Uh, Doug?
Uh, I had some over a week till it could actually come back for us to the final.
Okay.
Um, the, the one thing I did have a question, I mean, as far as the, I'm an issue with all the tenants for that, so I guess the only concern I have is by changing some of these definitions of the code, I have just a little concern that, you know, developing an industrial in some of this general business area, you know, for flex space in the future, that we could end up having issues down the road. But we don't have something to trigger us for doing it, and I guess my.
Well, it, you'll, you'll have it, it's going to be part of the site plan approval process. And, and this came about because there's an existing definition of a commercial plaza in the code that includes industrial, limited industrial. And we have tweaked the limited industrial regulations so that it's not a trucking terminal kind of business, it's going to, you're not going to have your FedExes or UPSs or.
Amazons or.
So, so I guess that was my concern, Ron, is that the limited industrial, those have distribution centers and some other things, wouldn't necessarily want that. The general busi- the general business district.
Not in a way that the, it's more than the definition, there's actually changes to the ally district regulations that address that concern.
Okay, so that's, that's something, yeah, you know, okay, that was my little concern, I read that and I went back to the ally district and that, that's what concerns me. Down the road, that might go in tenant and help that a new tenant could trigger a review that we may want to.
Well, for, for, for example, on another project that is moving along, okay? Um, the type of client that goes in there is a financial client. They insist on every building that they deal with that there be a loading dock so that they have a place to load on the wallpaper that's used in the processing internally in the building. It's not manufacturing anything, there's no product being created here. It's simply a philosophy of the need, changing needs.
Yeah, which makes sense to me, especially in, in that area.
Yep.
You know, some of the other stuff like, uh, you know, banking and professional executive offices and that all fits with my, within a general business district, so. It's just the warehouses or, you know, distribution centers, I, be my concern.
Exactly. The conversation that I had earlier today stemmed a lot around track.
Yeah.
And the amount of tracking generated by a change of.
Of use, that you may not see if it's just a tenant side of the lease, that's why I'm.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Adrian?
I don't have anything with tonight's proposal.
Okay, Tim. DeLucia.
I'm also okay with tonight's proposal.
Okay, so, Ron, we have a proposed letter, which I can sign. A memo to the, to the town board basically saying we agree with these proposed modifications of the incentive zone. So I will sign that and send that out, does anybody have any problems with me signing it? Speaking that?
Nope.
We're comfortable with your piece. Okay, I'll sign that letter and get that on. Okay, next item up is open discussion, Ron.
Off before, uh, Ryan, before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Drop off, I have that signed mylar for you. Um, how are you going to get it?
We can pick it up tomorrow morning, if that's fine.
Okay, maybe give Kim a call and she can drive by or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I signed that earlier.
All right, I'll, I'll.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I'll leave that in the building department then, so when you come pick it up, that's where you go.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, folks. Okay, next item up, Ron. Correct?
Yeah, I, is there anybody else?
Anybody else want to say, um, I mean, I think we're good.
Okay.
You're up.
I heard some noise and I didn't know what it was. Uh, just two things, number one, the the comprehensive plan is been sent to Kelly Plann electronically, there is one paper copy of the current 275 pages. Um, so anybody can't sleep, let me know and I'll, I'll load it to them.
I could use that last one.
Um, there's also, uh, public hearing coming up on that, the second public hearing.
Right.
On January 25th. And there's also a, another public hearing on the 25th on the solar law, which includes other amendments to chapter 165, in particular to deal with the changes necessary for the general business district where you have the, the greatest number of specially permitted, permitted uses, yet the intent really restricts those uses unnecessarily, so we're, we're starting to clean up that part of the equation. But that'll be a ongoing project all this year to get it done.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I'm, or Augie, I'm sorry. Highway.
Let's play highways into that winter season, the lads and then things we have to work on, a little conduit going in towards Cameron, the town board wanted in some of the park. From a park standpoint, uh, we, and while, while inspecting the lot or maintenance building out there, view required found that the heaters were not working in the bathrooms. So in the process of resetting them a couple times, one thing, why not to get them working? They finally appeared, and if they're going to continue working, however, the errand aside caution, uh, we drain the water down the facility for the, for the rest of this winter, just to ensure that those heaters are going to do their job all winter, but we take a chance on breaking some plumbing.
Cool.
That's about it, wait on the stall.
You want to introduce your other partner?
Most, mostly, you know, Jimmy, Jimmy's my, my deputy for several years now, actually since I became highway superintendent and the thought process and hopes are that he will fill in the appointee spot here for the remainder of the year as, uh, I've turned in my retirement resignation letter, if you will, as of the 31st of this month.
Cool, well, in fact, he hasn't put up with you, he's, he's paid his dues, right? I certainly have.
I, I do not notice that it won't be effective until it completes, while we fire on the record.
Oh, there you go.
How, how does that go, delegate?
There you go. Fire.
You're stuck with me for another year.
Okay, I can handle it.
The first five eight days, you've been good.
Well, I like that, that's a good start.
That doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't mean anything. Okay, cool. What do we got on, who we got online other than?
Adrian, Dan, John, Tim. That's it, and Dan, I guarantee you that talks.
Okay, I can handle it, I'll get feeling better, uh, Dan and, uh. Okay, we'll, uh, go, we'll start with Adrian, anything, Adrian?
I'm good for tonight, thank you.
Tim DeLucia.
Didn't hear any comments about my Christmas tree lights this, tonight, so I guess I'm good.
Yeah, get that started, now that, that looks official down there, we start on that last.
There you go. How are you feeling, Tim?
I, I feel fine, I mean, I, you know, I tested, uh, positive today in one of those home kits, because I was exposed to one of our holiday visitors who tested positive. So we'll see, I'm okay.
I hope you still feel good then. Okay, Doug?
I'm good.
Adrian? Or Aaron? That's the only time, that's the only time I did that today. Aaron.
Uh, Ron, so what happened with the comprehensive plan being called 2022 instead of 2021? What, where is it? I remember, first, one, one, one of the conditions, I thought we were going to call it 2022 comprehensive, that took so long.
2021, because it was completed in 21. Oh, that gives us nine years to implement the actions and get ready to do it again.
Right, okay, all right.
Or you, you get ready to do it.
Yeah. And the town board will put you.
I heard it, it's recorded, I heard him say it gives us the opportunity.
Yeah. Well, we need a, we need a citizen on there, so, uh, Don will, uh, will make sure we put you on the list for as the citizen, uh, fill in. Okay, um, I don't have anything either, other than that I need to send out a a, uh, letter with or a question with the dates for our, uh, organizational meetings, we go over our rules of, of procedure and the, uh, MTOB stuff, I haven't seen any reason or any changes in what Ron suggested, uh, any reason to make any changes, but they look pretty good. But we'll, uh, we'll do a, uh, an organizational meeting on Saturday, once I get this staff to figure out what's going on, so. Okay, anybody else have anything? Most adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
All right.
All right, thanks, everybody. Augie, you've got the letter.
I've got the letter.
You've got that other item that I picked up on.